Thank you for the recording. Got it? Okay. So we do have a quorum. Um, just a couple of housekeeping items. We have two new commissioners on tonight. We have Joe Beninato, if I pronounced that right, and we have Kate. Welcome to the Planning Commission. They have been appointed for um uh next term. I think it's four year term. And we also have returning, Dana Marus, uh who has just finished serving a four year term. And I'd actually like to take a minute to thank Commissioner Ronit Bodnar and David Merrick, who served us really well, Ronit Bodnar for eight years, and David for one term of four years. But what was really significant about those terms is when you look at Los Altos, you know, over the last thirty or so years, we have not had the growth like we have had in the last four to six years. We haven't had the change in state law. We haven't had the housing element. We hadn't had the downtown plan. So I really want to thank Marus and Ronit and David for shepherding in those tough projects. It wasn't always easy, but I think we're going to have really quality projects in the downtown and on the Al Camino corridor. So you know, I want to thank them for their efforts and their service. And welcome back, um, Marus, and welcome to Joe and Kate. Uh, okay. Well, first thing is um, public comments for items that aren't on the agenda. We have had a two submittals. Oh, Steve.
Yeah, for for the record, we do need to take a sort of the quorum. We have to establish a quorum. So we need to have people.
Do a roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Okay. See him on my way out and I forgot.
We'll reelect you and that will show you.
Uh, go ahead. Do you want you want to call rolls, Steve?
Yes, let me get to my listens. Uh, Commissioner Roche.
Here.
Commissioner Steinle.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Ahi.
Here.
Commissioner Beninato.
Here.
Commissioner Disney.
Here.
Uh, Vice Chair Mensinger. I don't see her.
There she is.
Oh. Okay, sorry. She is here. Uh, do we get affirmative there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And last, but not least, Chair Doran.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Great. Now we've established our quorum. Um, Mr. Wing has submitted a couple of letters to us in the Planning Commission. I don't see him on the call tonight and asked us to consider some items regarding traffic calming measures and canceling collector street traffic. And we need to get back to him and let him know that the Planning Commission actually does not take action on those items. It does not come from us anymore. So if the staff would please let him know that these items are not going to be on a future agenda for Planning Commission, that would be greatly appreciated. And refer him to the appropriate department.
Thank you, Chair Doran. This is Director Zorn. I will relay that information to our resident.
I think you already have, haven't you? Yeah.
Yeah.
I will reiterate.
Yeah, we were. We tried to explain that the PTC there is, it's just PC now. There's no T left.
Right. Right. So we'll try that again, but we thank him for his letter and, you know, actually is very comprehensive. You know, analysis of those corners. It was great. Okay.
We'll have fun with it.
Yeah, we can move on from that. And now we have a new um Planning Commission liaison. And I think, Nick, would you like to introduce our new uh Planning Commission liaison?
Yes, thank you, everyone. So good evening, Commissioners. Um, just briefly, wanted to take the quick moment. Um, thanking Steve Golden for his work as our um staff liaison to the Planning Commission. Um, while he was been serving as the um interim Planning Services Manager here at the City of Los Altos. Um, we recently completed our um permanent recruitment for um the replacement of the previous um full-time uh Planning Services Manager. And that uh new staff member is Stephanie Williams, um which I do think she's on the call.
Yes.
Hidden. Um, but Stephanie is um going to be serving as the liaison for everyone um moving forward. Uh, so this meeting, Steve will kind of help tag team um the meeting. And then moving forward, Stephanie will be the one to help handle that moving forward.
Great. Well, welcome. We appreciate you being here. And Steve, we really appreciate all the hard work and effort. You juggled a lot last year. We have a lot of really tough sites and a lot of big meetings. So thank you for what you've done. And you know, we're glad to still have you on staff. And welcome, um Stephanie.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words?
Uh, it's nice to meet you all. Um, I'm Stephanie Williams. I've, you know, been with the city about a month now. And I'm I'm happy to be here and to be uh the new staff liaison.
Great, thanks. Okay, moving on. Well, unfortunately, my reign as queen, no, no, my reign as a Chair of the Commission is up tonight. And we're going to have the election of the new Chair and the and Vice Chair. Um, I'm not sure of the rules on this. So Steve, um, is it just a straight nomination? Or?
Yeah, so usually what happens is there's a nomination for Chair. Um, that person usually either accepts or doesn't accept the nomination. There's a vote for the Chair, and then there's a nomination for Vice Chair and um similarly accepts and and then there's a vote.
Great.
Okay. Great. Well, I'd like to nominate our Vice Chair Susan Mensinger for Chair for the um is it two? We're two years now. We're going on two-year cycles. Yes, or no?
It's a, it should be a one year and it's supposed to be in October.
Right.
Um, looking back through the years, it hasn't always happened, but that's the the norms and the in the Commission handbook, I believe, is for one year in October.
Yeah. Alright, so I nominate Susan Mensinger, and we should call for a vote. Steve. Would you like to call for a vote?
Um, sure. Let me do that. Uh, Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahi.
Yes.
Commissioner Beninato.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Disney.
Yes.
Vice Chair Mensinger.
I guess I can vote on this? Sure.
Yes.
And Chair Doran.
Yes.
Great. Do you do you accept, Susan?
I do accept. Thank you.
Great, great. I'd also like to um nominate Commissioner Ahi as Vice Chair um for the next year.
I'll second that.
Great. Can we take a vote on that, Steve?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahi.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Beninato.
Yes.
Commissioner Disney.
Yes.
Uh, I guess it's Vice Chair Dora now.
Or outgoing Chair Dora. Yes, I, yes.
And and incoming Chair Mensinger.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you. And it's been fun. It's been a pleasure to serve. And Susan and Maybus, you're going to be great. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to them right now. And I will just become, you know, my regular, normal self.
Well, thank you, Shelley. You did a great job for helping us transition. So thank you very, very much. You have a wonderful style of making things efficient and pleasant. So. Okay, moving on. Um. On the consent calendar, the next item is approving the planning commission, planning commission minutes from way back in August 18th. Does anyone have any comments on this?
And um the the two, the new commissioners, they can vote on the minutes, even though that they weren't present because um you're just um voting on accepting them as the record of the meeting. You're not accepting them as to you're not approving them as to form. So you get to vote on the minutes. That was a change in the law a little while ago.
So are there any comments from any of the commissioners? Or should we take a vote to accept them, to approve them? Okay, Steve or Stephanie, whoever is running this, if you could take the roll call.
Here, I'll just continue.
Okay.
Commissioner Steinle.
Yes.
Commissioner Roche.
Yes.
Commissioner Ahi.
Yes.
Commissioner Beninato.
Yes.
Commissioner Disney.
Yes.
Uh. Vice Chair Ahi.
Oh, yes, I already said yes.
Oh, sorry. Um. He's good. Sorry, yes, I'm a lot right here now. Uh, Commissioner Doran.
Yes.
And Chairman Zinger.
Yes. Okay, so the minutes are approved from the August 18th meeting. I think now we will move into the one public hearing we have tonight, which has to do with 129 First Street. So let's open the public meeting. I believe there will be a staff report first.
That's correct. Uh, my name is John Leo, Associate Planner. So I'm going to present this conditional use permit.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to mention, I I need to recuse myself since I live within 500 feet. So I'll just turn off my video and I'll be back um for the reports and future agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marus.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening, uh Chair and Commissioners. This is Jaleel, Associate Planner. Before you, I'm going to present the conditional use permit, file number COP 22 dash 0002 for your consideration tonight. Since we have new planning commissioners, um so I have this one slide to brief some general information about the conditional use permit. As um from the name of this permit, it should be easy to tell that the permit is for a specific use consideration as proposed from the applicant. And the city should determine whether it'll be appropriate and compatible with the uh in the zoning district for the imposed conditions. And and then when taking actions on the use permit, it shall be based on the conditional use findings um that are qualified in the municipal code. Funding Commission can approve, approve with additional conditions or deny a use permit application through the hearing process. So back to this particular conditional use permit application, it is requested by the applicant Elmer Lane on behalf of the business owner Hyperspace. The property owner is 129 First Street LLC, who is different from the business owner. Hyperspace is an existing video arcade business operating at 127 First Street since 2018. The existing operation also received a conditional use permit approval from the Planning Commission in 2018. The original report can be found in the link provided in the agenda report for Commissioners if uh anyone is curious for the background. Now, after about three-year operation due to the high customer demand and the relocation of the current uh fitness studio at 129 First Street, Hyperspace now is requesting to expand the arcade use at 129 First Street. With regard to the operation um at 129 First Street, Hyperspace will keep the same arcade use as 127 First Street. Additionally, there is an existing kitchen that'll be used to serve food for special events only. The operation will only occur at the first story. There is a second story uh that is currently unconditioned and will remain unconditioned and will not use uh will not be a part of this conditional use permit and part of the future operation. The arcade will be open um Mondays through Thursdays from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Fridays from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In terms of the employees, there will be a total of two to four employees working on site at any given time. The zoning code, a minimum of two parking spaces are required based on the employee numbers. On the subject site, there are existing um parking spaces. There are six parking spaces, including 188 parking access from the alleyway. So the subject site has more parking spaces than the minimum required parking. The full operational details can be found in the attachment B of the agenda report for for Commissioners' reference. For this slide, Steph put the qualified uh use permit findings. And for for this application, uh in general, Steph found that the operation of the current arcade use at 127 First Street has been in appro- an appropriate use to the downtown since 2018. Planning Division has not received any formal complaints against the business. The expansion to the tenant space at 129 First Street should continue contributing to the uh downtown's economical viability. Overall, Steph found that with the uh imposed conditions of approval, the existing use um for the expansion proposal to 129 First Street is consistent with all the findings. So with all the presenting information, Steph now recommends the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit 22 dash 0002, subject to the findings and conditions listed in the attached resolution. That's now concludes the presentation and would I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for staff?
Uh, I do. Um, because you talk about a uh existing kitchen and the proposed food use, I don't see anything on the drawings that actually show kitchen equipment. So a couple of questions. Is there kitchen equipment there? And then secondly, I didn't see anything talking about if they do have kitchen equipment and they are serving food, will they have to um apply for a Santa Clara County health permit, which is relative to serving food and using a commercial kitchen? And and if there is a kitchen, is there exhaust? You know, is there an exhaust through the roof? I didn't actually notice it on the on the aerial. So maybe the applicant, when they come on, can um explain that to us because it changes the use a little bit if it's a commercial kitchen and they're going to be serving food. And it also changes the permit status a bit because they would have to go to Santa Clara County Health. So I I just didn't see it detailed. So I'd like some explanation about that.
Uh, so yeah, so thank you for the question. Uh, I believe there is existing kitchen currently uh on the first floor per the applicant's operation uh proposal. The existing kitchen would be further reduced in size and will only provide, um, I think, I believe catering food for the special events only. And uh, you're right, the applicant is here and he will, he probably can explain better for the kitchen use.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Elmer Lynn. I'm the, I'm a registered architect and the applicant for this project. And um regarding 129 First Street.
Uh, Mr. Lynn, could you just hang on a second? We're going to give you a chance to talk, but right now, why don't we get through any other commissioner questions for staff? And then we'll go to the applicant side. So are there any other Commissioners who have anything? Uh, Commissioner Beninato?
Yes, I am.
These are staff questions only. Not comments, just questions.
Yeah, it's it's a question um regarding the the floor plan that was just shown as well as um is in the packet, uh floor plan A 2.1A. I didn't see the um the connection to the other uh to the building next door on one of the diagrams. It's it's in one and it's not in the other. And uh, I I thought that was a little bit odd. I think it's where the storage room is, but I just wanted some clarity on which of these floor plans is accurate.
Uh, so on the there are three pages in the plan set. So the last the last plan sheet should show the proposed floor plan for the subject, uh subject property at 129 First Street. And the second sheet, uh which is sheet number A 1.1C. So the applicant did apply for the internal circulation in the recent middle. Um, this re- this internal circulation was added um was added in the recent middle. Probably that was not shown in the initial submittal. That's why there were inconsistencies. And uh, Steph, I I apologize for the inconsistency.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and oh, Commissioner Disney.
Yeah, uh, this plan um did not show elevations. So should we assume that the elevations are not changing, that the siding, you know, there's wood siding on the front and the back of 129? Um, are we to assume that there there will be no changes to um the elevations?
That's my understanding. There is no exterior modification. Just in interior remodeling.
So um, does that mean there will not be hyperspace signage on 129?
Um, for signage, which is a separate application from the conditional use permit, um, we we it it is not required to have the applicant present a signage information as part of the CUP. Um, because there is a separate administrative fine signage review uh process.
Okay, so so this use permit tonight would not give them the right to put a sign on 129?
Right, unless uh a subsequent fine permit, if the applicant applied to the city and obtained the approval from the city, then they will be able to put a signage.
Okay, and then um there's a planting strip, you know, between the street and the sidewalk. And I'm assuming that's all city-owned and they have no purview over what's in that planting strip, including the trees. Is that correct?
Um, it depends on where's the props align. If you refer to the planting strip within the public right-of-way, then yes, that's um the purview of the Public Works Department.
Well, yeah, I'm referring to the strip between the sidewalk and the street. I'm assuming that is in the public right-of-way. Is that the case?
Yeah, I believe so. They have the uh props align showed. Um. Like right next to the fence on the side one.
I'll just quickly comment. My understanding, based on other projects on First Street, um down First Street, that is considered part of the public right-of-way. The planting strip would be.
Okay, and then I have another question. Um. Um. Who owns 127 First Street? And the reason why I ask is that it seems, it would seem odd to me to expand a business in this way and have two different landlords or two different um property owners. It would seem to me to be somewhat difficult to run a business. Um, you you know, with sort of the hopes that um those two landlords are going to agree on um the lease terms and so forth. So um, do we know the owner um of 127 First Street?
So I believe it is own, it's the same owner as 129 First Street, but the applicant here, he can further confirm that.
Okay, and then my last question is, both sites have garbage kind of collection areas in the back. Um, the one behind 127 is really just um kind of a place to put garbage cans. And um for 129, there is an enclosure. So is the plan to um have all garbage end up in the enclosure now?
That was not um provided or proposed as part of their application. So I I'm not sure what their plan for the trash.
Perhaps that's a question for the applicant after he makes his presentation.
Well, my question then is, um, and I I'm sorry I didn't like read everything in um the design control, but um you know, or or chapter 14, but does 127's um garbage system, uh in other words, not having the enclosure, does that um comply with the um the zoning code in chapter 14?
So, um. I believe because this is the, this is expansion at 129 First Street. So when we look at the um we'll look at the 127 First Street, we, sorry, sorry, um, sorry, let me hit back up. So I don't think 127 First Street is part of this use permit application. Um, it, I'm not sure currently if it's uh if it's considered compliance or not compliance, because that's not um not only just the planning perfume for the trash um collection. And if there's any future uh remodeling to 127 First Street, then the building division may look at the overall um circulation for trash and determine if any improvements shall be made for 127 First. So for for now, um currently, it's we we don't, I think we we cannot impose any improvements for 127 First Street. If they're not um doing any remodeling to 127 First.
Julie, can you confirm that we are just looking at 129 First Street?
Yes, that's my understanding. We are just looking at the use permit for 129. And and um the other thing that I'd like to clarify is when you do a review for a use permit, you're only, I think, as um staff mentioned earlier, you're looking at the use that is not allowed by right, but it's allowed by a use permit. And so you can add conditions so that you can make sure that it's compatible or some of the concerns that you have about hours or noise or garbage, you can condition it. But you really don't look to the applicant. It's not personal to the applicant. This use permit will run with the land, so you want to make sure that this use um as conditioned um will not uh not pose any health, safety, and welfare uh impacts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Disney, did you have follow-up?
No, that those, no, that that helps. Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Before we turn it to the applicant? Okay, um. Mr. Lynn, I think you're up now. Um, Steve, what's our usual timeframe? How much time do we give them?
We give applicants 10 minutes. And then if there's any public comments, then they have five minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. You've got the floor.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, should I start by answering each of the questions in in particular?
Anywhere you want.
All right, well, um, let me uh fill in where some of the with some of the answers that um Ms. Liu had had already sort of started to to illustrate. Food service-wise, the existing can uh kitchen at 129 is being dismantled and being removed. So in itself, inside the premises of 129 First Street, there will not be any food service or food preparation facilities. Um. Moving to the next uh comments regarding um um the connection between the two, the two spaces, the two spaces, uh the two arcades in each of the spaces will be operated by one of the same entity with the same employees. Um, Scott, who's on this uh at this hearing, uh is the manager of the arcade and will be the manager of all staff and facilities of both addresses. Um, in terms of exterior, um, we're still reviewing the tenant improvement package for the ground floor at 129 First Street. Um, which will also include the physical connection to uh 127 First Street. There are no proposed changes other than replacing the entrance door to 129 First Street uh to make it a double door and making it fully accessible, which it is a single door at this at this time. Um, there's no changes to the rear elevation or the rear doors for that matter. And um I will skip over the planting strip questions because that is correct. That is, as we understand it, it is the public right-of-way. Um, terms of the ownership of 127, 129, this is, it is a similar entity that owns both. Uh, and in terms of the trash enclosures, currently, the trash bins, the recycling and compost and trash for 127 has a dedicated space in the garage. Um. And um building department have found it acceptable and um has given final uh uh provided final inspection and approval. building department have found it acceptable and um, has given final uh, uh, provided final inspection and approval. Uh, approximately a year ago. Um, the trash enclosure at one twenty-nine will remain in use. So in fact, this single facility of, of the two buildings will have two uh, dedicated trash uh, areas. Um, are there any other questions or thoughts?
Okay, Shelley.
So. Oh, I think I just answered. I was looking at in terms of exiting. You know, a sec, you're still gonna have a secondary exit out of one twenty-nine, correct? Or because you're a contiguous business. Um, and because we, it looks like, do we add the square footage altogether for one business or is this separate square footage? I'm asking that as a question to our staff, but you do, you will still have an exit out the back of one twenty-nine, correct?
That's correct. In fact, there will be two exits. The two exits that exist will be, will still be in use.
Yeah, got it. Thanks.
Um, just to clarify, if, are you done, Mr. Lynn, are you done with the presentation? Then we will go to any other commissioner questions. Are there any, is there anything else you wanna say before we do that?
No, I think I've, I've
Okay.
Some questions.
Great. Um, any other commissioners would like to, any questions for the applicant before we open it up for public comments?
Uh, I have a quick one. Is there gonna be, I think you said there's gonna be no change to the elevation, just to be um, clear. Does that mean there won't be any hyperspace signage on uh, one twenty-nine?
I think right now we're still considering that, but uh, you know, within the tenant improvements. So there will be an opportunity for for the city to review any, any proposed signage.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I think the signage is a, is staff level. I think that's what staff said, that the signage permit would be a staff level. I guess someone, Director Zorn's can confirm that.
Yeah, I'm gonna confirm that. That's gonna be out of the purview of the planning commission. So tonight, we're just talking about use. The site improvement as regards to signage would not be applicable for this discussion tonight.
All right, any other questions from commissioners? Okay, let's open it up for any public comments. Steve, can you manage how many we might have and how much time?
Sure, um, so at this time, if anybody would like to make a public comment for this item, we ask that you raise your hand using the reaction uh, button or feature. If you can't find that, um, any sort of any sort of gesture would work in the reactions. Um, and then if you can't find one of those, we'll open it up for anybody um, to unmute themselves. And if those people that wanna make any comments, if you can do that, so we can figure out how many people we have and adjust the time accordingly. Um, I don't see any hands raised at the moment. Um. If anybody wants to unmute themselves and provide a public comment, you're more than welcome to at this time.
Hi, my name's Scott Pelts. I'm the general manager. Um, we had a bit of a presentation. If you guys would like to um, get a little more information about the business, um, if that's of interest to you guys.
How long of a presentation is it, Scott?
Less than five minutes.
Um, I think the applicant still has some time, and if you're the only speaker, I think we could go ahead and do that if it's okay with the rest of the commission. Any objections? Go for it.
Okay, great. Um, let me just pull this up here. Okay, so um, is it, my name's Scott Pelts. I'm the general manager of Hyperspace. Um, Hyperspace has been a business um, in Los Altos downtown for a long time, but we were formerly known as Area One Fifty-One. But we've been a part of the community for over ten years now. Um, this particular location at one twenty-seven has just opened. Um, we started the planning process in twenty-eighteen, like was mentioned, but we just opened to the public this uh, last February. So we've been open less than a year, but we've already noticed, um, especially coming out of COVID, that people are really looking for a place to um, make connections with other people in the community, um, to have someplace fun for family to go to. Um, you know, we have a wide range of um, customers from you know, young children to adults. Uh, we get a lot of birthday parties, corporate groups, um, and things like that. And we're already noticing that there's a demand for larger space, um, where um, basically, people are looking for um, even more, you know, ways to have fun, and we're looking for more ways to provide that fun with more uh, party areas for birthday parties and more arcade games and, and things like that. Um. And so, um, you know, the, the business hours will be pretty much same as, as they have been. Um, you know, we, we aren't open late. Um, we're, um, you know, we have some days we're closed right now for maintenance, and then uh, during the summer break, we're open every day, uh, pretty much ten a.m. to ten P.M. Um, yeah, and then, um, Elmer, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, you, I can go to the next page. Yeah. So in terms of our building, the front yards will be cleaned up a little bit. Uh, there is a hedge on the left side of the front of one twenty-nine First Street that will be removed and dismantled. It's a consist of vegetation and some, and a low stucco-faced wall. Has nothing to do with the building. It's not structural. Um, it's a remnant from the Italian restaurant. Uh, if you, if any of you remember. So by removing that, we're able to create a physical connection uh, with the two front yards, so to speak. Um, the front yards will have uh, some, so, there, the existing vegetation will remain. There's a large tree uh, in front, as well as, of course, the uh, handicap accessible pathway. Um, all of that will remain. The fence will remain. The planting strip next to the sidewalk will remain. And um, it'll pretty much look the same. Um, as you can see in the plan, uh, uh, the existing rear uh, parking lot will remain, of course. And there's an accessible handicap accessible parking in the back. As all, and also, we're going to propose new bike parking under the existing pergola. That is, that's sort of at the rear exit as well. So that's a good location for all the kids' bikes, which we know uh, can be a little bit unruly when, when, when school's out. But uh, the main arcade expansion will be in the existing main cycling studio. And um, with the kitchen being dismantled, the kitchen and offices being dismantled, and be made into function rooms such as karaoke rooms. Um, the existing uh, handicap accessible restrooms in the space will remain and be reused. And then you can sort of see right in the center of the plan, there's the connection that we're hoping to make to one twenty-seven. Any thoughts or questions?
I, I have a question. I, I'm kind of a building wonk, um, building department wonk, and and Jolie, this is kind of for you also. So there are two, it's two different property lines, correct? Property line for one twenty-seven, property line for one twenty-nine, but we're now making this a contiguous space. So there's two questions in there. One is, you know, health and safety, and I'm assuming the building department will give you, you know, their thoughts on fire safety and life safety when you time together. But Jolie, I still don't understand how it could be a separate, I, I know it's a a, a, another use permit, but wouldn't it be an extension of the existing use permit because it's the same business? And now they're just coming through a common wall. So the conditions at one twenty-seven couldn't be different from one twenty-nine? I just, I, I, I'm so confused about that. And you know, you're the expert at that.
Well, I think this use permit, and staff can correct me, it's it's a use permit to allow one twenty-nine to be a different use. Um, I haven't thought about making it one use permit for both APNs. Um, but
Because of the physical connection and going across the property line. So they're tying together two properties. So I, I'd just like us, like to understand that a little more.
I, well, one, the one use permit, I mean, one twenty-seven has a use permit for that use, and now that they've expanded into one twenty-nine, it needs a use permit. The one thing that the applicant could have done is applied for a use permit to apply to both of them, but I think because they're under slightly different ownerships, that they have different use permits. And I would ask the director to, um, or I don't know if uh, Steve wants to chime in on this, but that's how I see that they went under two use permits, um, because of the different ownerships. Um, so is the staff have a comment on that?
Can I just ask, Jolie, and so by, because there is slightly different ownership, because the use permit runs with the property, not with the applicant?
Right.
Operator of the business, that's why you actually do need to have two different use permits?
That's, that's how I see it. Um, and they're, you know, and they're compatible uses. It's not like the two parcels are being merged. They're going to stay separate legal parcels. Um, and now, um, to provide for the use, they need a use permit. And that's, that, that's how I saw this. And so it is a little, it is a little strange. I don't know if the director has something else to add to this, um, or if Steve does, or, um.
I don't have anything to add other than I think it does help reinforces that there's two. So if there becomes conflict with one of the spaces, the other one is, you know, there's, there's ways for enforcement action. I've seen it done both ways. I think this way gives us a little bit more teeth if something were to become more problematic in the future versus an amendment and just an expansion under one um, use permit. So it really, it's a matter of city process and how the preference was to proceed with it with the initial application. Um, there's not a right or wrong answer. It's just if we were to expand the one use permit, it would run under one, and then potentially the validity of that would be um, pulling it um, in the future where this would be two, and if one became conflict, we would be able to do that. Again, also because there is separate ownership, there could be the potential for a different owner to sell off part of the building and then that not be leasable um, in the future, uh, potentially. So you know, there's also that. So this again helps to reinforce that um, separability component to um, the two spaces since they are adjoining.
Yeah, and, and, and if the property was sold separately, it would be subject to this use permit. And if the use was not the use that was allowed under this use permit, they would be coming in for a new use permit if the use wasn't allowed by right. So it does, it, it does give uh, the city more control of maybe these two parcels. Let's say this new use isn't that successful and that owner moves on, the new person or the new owner coming in would need to comply with the use permit or get an amended use permit or do something that's allowed by right. So I, I agree with um, Nick. It, it, it does give the city control.
There's another feature, which is that these are actually, from my observation this afternoon, two completely separate buildings. They do not actually have a common wall. There's a gap of a few inches between the sidewalls that are adjacent to each other. So they are in fact completely separate properties. And I think that's the uh, uh, feature here that has to, as Jolie was saying. You, you, you have to provide for two separate places, which is what they are physically and, and legally. So.
Uh, Susan, I think you're muted. I had, had another question.
Sorry about, yes, I was. Um, I see you. Uh, yes, I'm sorry, didn't see you had it. Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Joe?
Thank you. Um, I, uh, this was the first I heard of the bike parking um, on the, on the presentation, and I was just curious what the planned usage is. Are the, are the kids to park bikes in the back? And then somehow get around to the front, or will there be a rear entrance that they're allowed to uh, come in through?
Uh, so I can take that. Yeah, there will be a, a rear entrance available to them as well. We'll have bike parking uh, both in front and in back. Uh, we have current bike parking in front at one twenty-seven, and this will just be additional uh, in the back, and there's a door right there.
So where the pergola, existing pergola and tables are now, that's where this bike parking would be envisioned?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Disney?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. If hyper, hyperspace um, chooses to later redesign facade to unify one twenty-seven and one twenty-nine, um, and in doing so, they create um, a business facade that exceeds fifty feet. Um, would they have to come back and apply for two new use permits?
So Commissioner Dis- Disney, so um, if they just want to modify the exterior facade and per the zoning code, if they're not uh, change, if, if they would not change the overall height, not increase the overall height, they're not adding any additional square footage to the existing building, they're not necessarily required to um, to go through any public hearings for the modification. And also if they're not chan, if they're, excuse me, if they're not changing the proposed use or the approved use from today, um, they're not required to come back for a conditional use permit.
All right, so um, what I understand, I mean, someone's gonna have to help me with this, but wha- what I understand the code to say is that building facades on First Street are not to exceed fifty feet. Um, the module, um, the maximal, maximum, I think it's called module width is fifty feet. So if they come back and they redesign their facade and, and it reads visually like um, an elevation or a storefront that is a hundred feet wide instead of fifty feet wide, wouldn't that disturb kind of the pattern of the street? And, and wouldn't that um, violate the design controls in the zoning codes?
Can we, can we just step back for a second? I think we're getting into commissioner comments now, but we haven't actually officially closed public hearing to public comments. So we kind of got a little off track because we went back and forth with the applicants. I'd like to get us back following the procedure, then we can get back to your questions. Can we just confirm, are there any other public comments to be had tonight on this? So Steve, it sounds like we don't have anybody else, so we can close the public hearing part of this, and then we can go back to your question, Commissioner Disney. And your comment, is that seem right, Steve?
Yeah, so again, if anybody has a public comment, if you wanna raise your hand or unmute yourself, um, then we can give you time to speak. I do not see any hands raised, and I don't hear anybody unmuting themselves at this time.
So I think we close the public hearing, and then let's go to commissioner comments, and then I think Commissioner Disney, let's go back to where you were. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we are following the protocol.
That's totally fine. So I don't think I'm gonna restate the question.
Right.
Um, so Commissioner Disney, I'm wondering the standard you found, are they are from the design control section?
I think it's fourteen point four, four point one three zero. I read the design control. Um, and um, it says that a module is to be no more than fifty feet. So um, architectural elements signaling individual businesses are not to extend by more than fifty feet. And so um, if hyperspace came and redesigned facade to unify these two parcels, you would have a business facade that exceeds that fifty um, foot um, maximum width. It would end up looking like a consolidation of lots. I think that could be disruptive to the pattern that we have along First Street. So I'm wondering if there's anything I'm missing here. Um, would the staff review a change to the elevation and um, ensure that, that fifty-foot pattern is retained?
Can I, can I ask a kind of a clarifying question to what Commissioner Disney's asking? If these were two completely separate owners, who decides to do the exact same thing that she was talking, that she's concerned about? Would the city have any right to intervene in that situation? I, I think we're sort of getting a little bogged down in the fact that there seems to be some common ownership or some common purpose here, which doesn't really, in my mind, legally change what they're asking for with the conditional use permit, or perhaps I'm wrong. I understand your concern, Commissioner. I understand your concern, Commissioner Disney, but I'm not sure we can tie two separate parcels together because of that. Or maybe we can, Julie, tell me.
Well, if the two property owners wanted to do two facades. That related to each other, I'm not sure what we could do with that if each facade was only fifty feet. Um, I. Um, it's not going to be like signage over the two properties, you know, but if they did. Two facades or two designs or something that. Sort of matched each other, I mean, and it didn't need a building permit, or it didn't need design review, I'm not sure what. We could do, but, um, I mean, this is, I haven't really thought this one through. This is a very interesting question.
Julie, could you, could you go back to something you said and please clarify? You said two different building owners. Did you mean two different business owners? Because we understand that both properties are owned by the same entity, but there's two different business owners? Is that correct?
So, um, Mrs. John, uh, staff, so I believe the business, business owners are the same. They're all the hyperspace management team. Uh, the property owner, as I heard from the applicant, they're slightly different in name, but, uh, they are the same entity, if I heard that correctly.
So I'm gonna interject a little bit. So one, we're talking about use, not, um, the building. I do understand that there's the potential for potential lot consolidation and, um, lot mergers, lot ties. There's a variety of different, um. Essentially subdivision controls that could potentially come into play in the future, however, that's not a part of this application. Um, I think that's something that would be a triggering point potentially to be able to do some of the certain facade improvements or enhancements. That are being discussed right this second, um, however, not applicable to the application before the commission this evening. I'm going to lastly say the provision that Commissioner Disney did find, um. Is correct in the way that she is reading it. I have it in front of me right now. However, one thing I do want to, um, remind the commission of is that, that particular design control. Has only been codified since last year. That's a new provision in the code, which was adopted, um, in late last year. So this might be a good example of something that I've discussed previously with individual commissioners of. Certain design characteristics or things that might not really actually be working. Once we actually start trying to implement them into, uh, day-to-day development activity. Um, because these are unforeseen consequences of decisions of design controls that we're not able to actually see come alive. Um, so this is something that we would need to evaluate in the future if and when it were to actually come up with an application that would require that.
Um, and one thing you brought up, the subdivision controls, the city does not have an automatic merger ordinance. So if two properties that are adjacent to each other are owned by the same property or the same entities, it doesn't mean merger. It does not mean that the two parcels become one. That's another, um, issue, so.
I guess, you know, I think it's a little weird that there's gonna be two arcades, um, next to each other. And with two separate entrances and, and, um. I, I think it's possible that someone might ask the question, well, gee, why don't we, um, create one entrance? And, and, you know, make it one big arcade, but I don't, I'm wondering if, okay. Could that even be done with the design controls that we have? I mean, it's, it sounds like you can't really have a module of more than fifty feet. So, you know, regardless of what they want or who the owners are, um, it doesn't say. I mean, I, I just want to confirm this, that they cannot, um. Consolidate those two fifty-foot modules into a hundred-foot module. Because in doing so, would they, wouldn't they violate the design controls in the zoning codes? That's, that's just really my question.
Susan, can I interject something here?
Yes, please.
Yeah, first of all, I, I think we're getting, as, as Nick has tried to point out, we're getting off-field here. This is a speculative question. These design controls are, were intended in the first instance for new construction. And we're talking about here about what might be a sort of superficial, uh, development on the front of the buildings. And whether that, in some way violates these design controls. The question of a remodel or any kind of sort of superficial rebuilding as opposed to new construction. Was not addressed when these design controls were, were brought into place. It is a question I think that is gonna have to be addressed. By this commission and by others. And I would be very cautious about speculating about the possibility of this or that happening in these circumstances. Until we're faced with the question, we really don't know what the answer is. And we're here just to decide whether or not to allow these people to have an arcade in this space. What might happen or could happen, or one imagines would happen, is really not relevant to that question. So I'd like to, to, I, I personally would like to see us talk about the space and not about what might happen on the outside of the buildings.
Are there any, any comments about relating to the question before us, as, um, was pointed out, it really is focusing on the use permit? Not, not defining issues.
I'd like to just say one thing, so. When you expand an existing business at the expense of another one, to me, it defeats the purpose of. The district, which is to provide for a full range of retail office and services, um, appropriate to a downtown. So if every business in downtown did this, we would have half the businesses that we have today. I think that would be a really big problem. Um, now I think we have to take this application in context and look at, okay. How vital or how, how much vitality, um, how much commercial vitality is there on First Street? It's, it's not, you know, there's been a lot of turnover in this area. And so I guess I'm feeling like I wanna approve this, except I don't wanna see businesses. Do things, um, that, that do elevation changes. That, um, read like a consolidation of lots, whether it's legally a consolidation or not. That's not my, my issue. It's just, I don't want it to read like a consolidation of lots. Because I think it would really degrade, um, the, the pattern in downtown. Um, and I think it might kind of open the, the gates for, for, um, other businesses that are seeking more, um, square footage. So that, that's really just my concern is, you know, is this really, uh, is this really a good, um. You know, are we setting a precedent, I guess, by allowing businesses to expand in this way? Um, and what does that do to the, to the elevation? If they are able to create modules that exceed the, the fifty-foot maximum?
Okay, um, under, anybody else have any comments relating to the issue before us tonight?
Um, is this the time that we can add to the conditions, Susan?
I believe it is, unless Julie or Steve tells, tells me it's not.
Okay, I would like to add something to the CUP. Because I don't see, I'd like to get some more detail on the plan relative to removing the existing kitchen. So it's detailed on the plan that they will not have a kitchen, and the existing kitchen is gonna be removed. So if the architect could go ahead and detail that, that, you know, removal of all kitchen equipment and exhaust. And, and that will be as part of this use permit and no commercial kitchen. You know, which under the ordinances would have to go on, up to Santa Clara County Health will be permitted. So I want to amend the use permit to add that.
Okay, and that's something that staff could then just review as.
Before it goes, if, yeah, if we push it through and it goes to council, I'd like to have that wording in there and have the drawings changed. The council's been really clear that if we make these changes, they wanna see them on the plan before it gets to them.
This, this would, this would stay with planning commission and less appeal to council.
It would, okay, then it's even more important that we put that, to me, that we put that condition in. You still wanna see it becoming, all of a sudden becoming a big restaurant space.
And then the applicant has no problem with doing that?
No.
Okay.
And I'm trusting that the building department is going to do their job when looking at the, um, new interior connection. Because one twenty seven as well as one twenty nine has to have a building permit. I still, still sort of bothers me about the contiguous space and exiting, but building and fire, I'm sure will be looking at this.
That's what we, that's how we understand.
Yeah, any other commissioners have comments on this? Okay, then I think we are ready. If anyone would like to make a motion, ready for a vote.
I'll be happy to make the motion if you want.
Yes.
And, uh, I have a question. I think this is Julie's question. Since this is both the approval of the, the conditional use permit and a SEQA exemption, do we need to do that in two parts? Or can we do it all as one?
You can do it as one. You're going to approve the use permit, CUP two-two-oh-oh-two, um, as amended. Um, as the condition was amended, and then that you, um, at the project was found to be exempt. From environmental review, um, under section fifteen-three-oh-three. Um, of the SEQA guidelines.
Okay, so we can do it as a single motion. All right. Okay, then I'm going to move that we approve. Uh, the conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two, which is a conditional use permit for the. Expansion of an existing commercial recreation use at one-two-nine First Street. As, uh, with the additional condition that has been suggested by Commissioner Doran, uh, concerning the, uh, plans. And the, uh, indication that there is no commi- commercial or, or other kitchen space, uh, within one-twenty-nine. Did I say that correctly, Shelley? That's what you wanted?
I, I'm so sorry, but I, I have to just bring this back up. It's the, it's application for the expansion of existing commercial recreational use. And we've been talking about it being two separate permits. So I don't know how you change the language in this paragraph, but it doesn't read like we are, we've been told it needs to read.
I read that, I read what was printed. First Street, and then you would like to make a change to the conditions, you'd like to make an additional condition. And that's the part that I was, I was referring to.
Yes.
The, the condition, as you stated, was to remove from the drawings any indication of the kitchen space, because they intend to take that out. And that there will be no additional kitchen space added, um, to replace it. Does that, did I get, did I, I got what you wanted in?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, that we, in doing this, we find that there is, this is exempt. Uh, pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section one-five-three-zero-three. So that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second.
Okay.
All right, Steve, could you call the roll on this?
I sure can. Commissioner Roche?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
Commissioner Benigno?
Yes.
Commissioner Disney?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Doran?
Yes.
And, sorry, did I say Commissioner Steinle?
You did.
Okay, sorry. And Chair Menzinger?
Yes.
That's approved on a vote of six-zero.
Okay, great. All right, uh, moving on, we have commissioners' reports and comments. Does any commissioner have a report to make or any comments?
I did, I was monitoring the last, uh, city council meeting, and I don't have anything to report. There, there was eight, eight consent items, um, and they all voted on them. Um, so it was a very quick, um, very short meeting, so nothing to report of that.
You were lucky.
Yes, it wasn't one o'clock in the morning.
Um, for our two new members, you may have been told that each of us are assigned certain days to be sort of the planning commission ears and eyes. At city council meetings, and Steve, are we coming out with a new schedule of that, or where are we in that?
Yeah, we should, um, create a new calendar since we have new commissioners. So we'll get on that and send that out to the commission and, um, and then amongst the commissioners, if you have any conflicts. You can just work amongst yourselves as far as trading, uh, commission dates.
Thank you. Uh, next item, if there's nothing else for reports and comments, I think we got a potential future agenda items. So Steve, that's probably you.
Uh, well, at this time, I don't have anything specific to report as far as future items. Uh, we do have a couple, um, well, mixed use or, uh. Multi-family residential projects coming through, uh, staff review. So those will make it to the commission, uh, in the future. I don't quite know when. Uh, and I don't know if Nick wants to mention anything about upcoming stuff with regards to housing element. If there's anything on the calendar.
Yep, so I will just jump in and, uh, inform the commission. The commission will be seeing the housing element on January fifth. Um, so right after the turn of the year, first week of January, so please mark your calendars. It is very important that you all are in attendance for that meeting. Um, if you are not for some reason, please make sure that you advise me, um, as early as possible. Um, so we can discuss, um, alternatives potentially. That will be, um, a virtual meeting, so really, there is kind of the very big flexibility. So if people are traveling, please try to allocate time away for that meeting. Um, as of right now, I intend on that meeting only being for the housing element, um. Uh, and not having any other private development applications moving forward for that evening. Uh, just so that the commission, as well as anybody that's on the call, is also well-informed. Uh, we will be having a study session with the city council on the housing element. So, uh, specifically to the two new commissioners, it would be very good for you to, um, observe. The study session on November twenty-ninth, uh, with the city council. Just to kind of get as much of a background and understanding of where we're at in the process. Because the next time this does come forward, um, will be on January fifth to the commission. Where you will be asked to make your recommendation to the council for adoption prior to the January thirty-first deadline. Uh, so it is going to be coming up very quickly, and staff is moving and putting a lot of hours and time into this. In order to make sure we meet our statutory requirements for the state. Um, and I will obviously just share is that we're in very good standing. Our letter was, um, definitely has. We have some work to do to make some amendments to the document. However, it is a very, um. Well, uh, positioned letter for us to be able to accomplish that prior to our due dates. So if you have any questions, please reach out to me directly, and we can discuss accordingly.
Director Zorins, did you have a time for that, uh, study session?
Um, as of right this second, it is forecasted to start at five-thirty, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Um, that's positive news on the housing element.
Yes, so I'm very excited.
San Francisco's about to get sued.
Yeah.
They're, they're resisting, so we're, we're, we're in better shape than that, fortunately.
Shelley, you had your head up?
Sometime next year, um, can we look at, um, mechanical parking structures? We've been talking about it for a long time, and since we have a lot more housing coming in. Like to at least be, have everyone be educated on how the mechanical lifts work, so we don't kind of run through what we did last year.
Yeah, we had talked about maybe going to see some, and.
Yeah, uh, before I left, I thought you, the planning commission was going to go on a site visit, like a field trip. And go. And then go, we have to notice it under the Brown Act, but you can go off-site and, and go and see it. But we'd post it, but I, I thought the planning commission did go do that, but maybe I'm mistaking. But, um, they are very, very interesting, and, um. Yeah, so we can, we can arrange something, I think.
Interested, if you can find a place where we can go.
We, we might have some connections now with the neighboring cities, so, um. With our new liaison.
Yeah, that's great.
So, and it's probably for the best that we haven't actually done the site visit up until this point. Because there are some provisions that did change in the CBC that is being adopted, um, so, which will go into effect come January one. Um, so there might be some particulars of things that you could have seen. Um, so there might be some particulars of things that you could have seen in regards to some things that were approved that were more of a conditional approval for those mechanical parking lifts, where now some of them are actually by virtue of being ministerial action. So um, it's good to fully understand them for sure, but um, it'll also just help to be able to clarify once we do a little bit um, more digging into some of the new regulations um, of the two thousand twenty-two CBC.
Okay, so we'll leave it to you to figure out where to go and when to do it, to make the most sense. Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay, anything?
Oh, sorry. One, one thing I just wanted to mention was, um, I know, uh, former Commissioner Bodnar was discussing this, uh, I think last year about visiting projects that we've approved, um, and seeing what the end result is compared to, you know, when we approve them. Um, they did it as an exercise. Um, and it really helped them. So now that we have, you know, new commissioners, I think it might be good in the next year. I know there's a couple on First Street that are um, probably gonna be done next year. Um, so just something to think about if staff wants to maybe put that on a calendar date. Um, so yeah.
All right, anything else? If not, it is eight, twelve, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Congratulations on the new commissioner and the vice chair.